The Songi Nation's Twinamal Nation, whose traditional territories we live, we learn, and we do our work. And thank you all for being here, either in person or online. We've got a lot to look at tonight. There's a lot under finance. There's quite a bit that's happening over the summer that we need to catch up on and as well as celebrate. So I'm going to get the meeting going right away by doing some table invitations. There were some people that couldn't make it tonight, so hopefully they will be able to catch up on the online version at some point. But we'll just go around and introduce ourselves so that everyone knows who we're looking at when there's a meeting. I'm going to start with you, Tom.
Great, thank you. Tom Hartz, Deputy Superintendent.
Good evening, everyone. Sean Powell, Associate Superintendent.
Vicki Roberts, Vicky VP A, and Prince Lott Glanford.
Oh, good evening. Genshin Wilson, Director of Leadership and Situation. And let's go back.
All right. Good evening, everyone. David Horace, Director of Instruction.
Tom Carney, Director of Instruction.
Mike Anderson, Patrick Sharp.
Thanks, Mike. And Norma Way that never.
Norm Isaac, President of QB32.
Fisher, that's them. Excited of AP947.
Marini, Justice and Housing, Director of Statistics. Lenora, Big Auto Partner, KPMG. President of Park, our finance budgets and financial. Julie Lutner, Associate Secretary Treasurer. The Trans giant Secretary Treasurer. Third Word Superintendent. And I'm Sherri Bell, Official Trustee, and I'd like to welcome everyone to the meeting. I'm just going to go over a few things before we get started. And at some point, we might have to move the tables around so not so far away from me. Just a little refresher in Greater Territorial School District, our policy 9360, our partners around the table. And before motions are passed, I will often ask if there are any comments from our partners at the table. And please feel free to make a comment or ask a question at that point. Also, we have a question period that comes later on the agenda. And if anyone has a question, they can submit it online, which we have two that came in online. And if you're in person, you can also fill it out. There's a link in the council over there, and that needs to be submitted by the end of the superintendent's report on the agenda. And so moving along, I'd like to approve the agenda and approve the minutes from last June 16 meeting. Both of those motions are carried. And I'm going to move right to A5, which is the Audit Fin reporting. Lenora Lee from KPMG. From KPMG is here. She is our auditor. And we had an audit meeting last week where she presented her findings. And it's always good to see you again, Lenora. So I'm going to pass it over to you to start with your audit report.
Sure, thank you. Thanks for having me at the meeting tonight. I'll just touch on a few of the highlights of the audit findings report. The details were discussed in our thorough meeting of the audit subcommittee last week. In our role as auditors, we are engaged to provide an opinion and audit report on the financial statements and their compliance with the accounting rules that the Ministry of Education and OCG requires the school district to follow. Our audit report as drafted is a clean and unqualified audit opinion. It indicates that the statements are prepared in compliance with the accounting rules that are required and that there are no material errors of the financial statements. The audit was conducted in accordance with our audit plan, which was prepared and presented earlier in May. That plan had a materiality level of 6.5 million and an audit posting threshold of 325,000. And what those figures mean is are essentially when we issue our audit report, we're looking to determine if there are any potential uncorrected audit differences greater than that value. And our posting threshold provides a level of timeliness as to when we would identify and communicate errors. This fiscal year's audit had both no corrected and no uncorrected audit differences, meaning the statements as we received them were the same numbers as we're finding on now. That's a very clean audit result to have both no corrected and no uncorrected audit differences. It's pretty rare within this sector because we've seen two in the last three months. So a very positive outcome in terms of this year's audit. In terms of our areas of focus, I'll just touch on a couple of those. We spent our time on a couple key areas, the first being capital assets. These are the capital acquisitions that the school district has made as well as disposals during the course of the year and accompanying those, the capital grants that are received from the Ministry of Education. Some notable highlights in the current year were transactions to dispose of a portion of the lands down property to CSF as well as capital additions on the Cedar Hill Capital Project. In terms of revenue and deferred revenue, we confirm most of these values directly with the Ministry of Education to ensure that the values in their books and records are the same as those in the school district's records. We also audit the accounts payable, accrued liabilities, and expenses of the school district in another transaction stream, looking at comparisons to both prior year and budget, and also looking at the timing of transactions to ensure that they're recorded in the appropriate fiscal year. And then lastly, in terms of salaries and benefits, the largest expense of the school district, we are again comparing to both prior year as well as budget. This year was also a full deep dive year into what's referred to as employee future benefits. These are things such as sick leave or retirement pay that is earned during the course of employment and paid out on retirement. We confirmed these values also with a third-party mercer who has performed that work on behalf of all school districts in the province. Again, no corrected or uncorrected area misstatements in any of those areas and no concerns that we noted. Lastly, just wanted to comment on control observations. We had not identified any significant or material control deficiencies in our work. The areas that we performed walkthroughs and testing in, we did find that the internal controls were designed and operating effectively. So at this point in time, the only matters that remain outstanding prior to completion of our audit are exceptions and approval of the financial statements by the official trustee and then little exchange the representation letter with our finalized audit opinion. Lastly, just want to thank the finance team and the district for all their support in the audit process. We do ask a lot of questions. We look for a lot of supporting documentation, so really appreciate the collaboration and the timeliness of responses, accessibility to staff in order to work towards this every possible. Time to address any questions.
Thank you. I think all my questions are answered at the audit committee meeting. And I just want to thank you, Lenora, for always being such a positive influence when you're around the table and also with your folks to the audit. For those people in the room, Lenora and her team had a lot of really positive things to say about our finance department. And while a lot of us were on summer holidays in July, they were working really hard. And so huge kudos and thank you so much to Katrina and Verinder and Julie, who are here and the rest of your team that also worked with KPMG. So thank you, thank you so much. And your audit report is always easy to read. So I think that's it, Julie. Or Katrina, Verinder, do you want to have anything you'd like to say? Okay, we'll bring you to the audit committee meeting shortly, and there'll be more there. So thank you so much, Lenora. Okay, moving along, we have district celebrations. And so tonight, I'm going to ask David Kovas to come and introduce our two guests. We had a summer program that was operating that is a wellness center, a learning center, and we are looking forward to hearing about how that program went this time. So pass it over to David Kovas.
Thank you very much. Can you hear me in the microphone? So on, it's all ready. One, two, three. Green light, let me go, does it in one, two, three. Open hearing, Deborah.
Good evening, everyone. As mentioned, my name is David Horace, Director of Instruction here in S P 61. And I have the privilege of being here with two colleagues, Sanji Galahun, who's the Vice Principal at Victoria West Elementary School, and Samantha Rubin, who's a district multicultural VA support worker. And we're here to talk a little bit about our summer program. And so this past summer, our district pivoted a middle school program designed to support youth. We may have limited access to summer activities and learning opportunities. The program focused on strengthening literacy and numeracy skills through engaging hands-on and choice-driven experiences. We intentionally focus on middle school students as we know that engagement often dips during these formative years before increasingly any later grades. By offering this program, we aim to sustain students' curiosity and motivation as a critical, that is a critical stage in our educational journey. School-based teams from all our middle schools connected with families, resulting in 85 students attending the program at SJ Willis Learning Center. Funded by the Ministry of Education, the program provided 40 hours of instructional time across two weeks, running daily from 9:00 a.m. to 2:45 p.m. Learning was centered around the applied skill, skills, designs, and technology curriculum with integrated opportunities in literacy, numeracy, the arts, and physical activity. Students also participated in field trips to extend learning beyond the classroom. The program was delivered by a team of five teachers, four educational assistants, two multicultural workers, an administrative assistant, and an administrator. All students received a summary of learning, while those with individual educational plans were also provided with a summer student learning profile that supported their personalized growth. Overall, the program not only strengthened academic skills, but also fostered relationships, engagements, and confidence for middle school learners as they prepare for the new school year. And now I'd like to introduce Sanji, who's going to share some personal experiences, followed by Sam Rubin.
Good evening, it's my first four meetings, Tom. Welcome, Tom, and as in person. Good evening, trusty bell, and everyone else at this meeting. My name is Sanji Galahun, and I have the privilege of serving as the principal for the district's very first summer program this time. I want to just begin by recognizing the incredible collaboration that made this program such a success. Like, this was truly a district-wide effort, and it showed in the rich experiences our students had. First of all, our facilities department worked like hard, as I was on and off of them daily to making sure things are ready. And also our people's future coordinator, Nigel Henry. Every student had access to nutrition meals each day, support that continues throughout the year as well for other schools or elementary and high schools, schools that were taking advantage of that program. So thank you to them. We're also grateful to the dedication of our both QB and G T staff whose care and professionalism truly brought the program alive. We have the privilege of welcoming Trevor McKenzie, who partnered with our teacher to design engaging, hands-on learning opportunities that connected directly to students' lives. One of the highlights was our field trip where John Harris from our indigenous department joined us to share the knowledge of the land we live on and learn on. This was a powerful experience that deepened students' connection to place and community. Our career pathway department, Kevin Glass, again, his team, also played a hero guiding students through building projects. They were able to take home these projects that only gave students practical skills, but also a real sense of pride in what they could accomplish. We're outside in the parking lot at SJ Willis, the tables are over standing. It was a really nice vibe being outside, not being indoors. And as anyone knows, like standing, it's great being outdoors and standing and getting a hammer or a prop nail. Perhaps most importantly, the impact of the program was felt beyond the classroom. Many parents reached out to share their gratitude, telling us how thankful they were for this opportunity and how it reignited their childhood's excitement with the school. Several even asked the program if it continued future summers. I taught 12 years in middle school, so it was nice to come back and to reconnect with these middle school students. And some of them actually taught in elementary in other schools, so it's kind of neat to circle back and meet with again. On a personal note, I was fortunate to build many altered relationships with students and families during my two weeks in the program. One student in particular who'd seek me out several times a day simply to check in. Simple reminder of meaningful connections. And we're able to build them and we're great spaces like this, and there are so many more stories just like this. But this one was special because this guy, he's like this tall kid, every day, Mr. G. Sandwich, yes, man, uh, two, yes, you can. It was just every day, like, there was just, he would always come and seek me out. It was, it was, it was really nice. And I only met him during the summer, I didn't know anything about this guy. So it was really nice. In closing, for our first summer program, it was a true example of how we can accomplish when departments and staff and communities come together with students at the center. It was a privilege to be a part of this, and we're excited to carry this momentum forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Samantha Rubin, and I have the great honor and privilege of being a multicultural liaison support worker in this district. I am delighted to be here tonight. Thank you very much for having me. So I'd like to ask everyone right now if we could just shift to a heart-centered paradigm, please. Because honestly, at the end of the day, fundamentally, connection and belonging is what everybody yearns for. Everybody strives to be seen and heard and accepted and loved. And I do believe that that is what the summer program fostered. We fostered positive connections and that relationship piece with the students and the staff. It was really a celebration of learning on a holistic level. All about the social emotional learning. And it was a chance to embrace a new opportunity for student engagement in this way. I do believe the stories are paranoid, spoken waxes, poetic about all of the things that we did, but the stories at the bottom, the bottom line of it, it's the people that count, right? Just with the connection and belonging. So I'd like to share with you some stories about what happened at the summer program. There were two brothers who attended who were multimodal learners, and they were quite shy and trepidatious at first. So I was able to connect with them in their heritage language, and we exchanged greetings every day. What a beautiful thing to behold, these two brothers blossom. So going from being quite shy and trepidatious to blossoming and engaging and being very active participants in the program. They were fully engaged with others. They were just thriving. And at the conclusion of the program, they were joyful and so thankful. And they expressed in a beautiful note of thanks that was handwritten, replete with all of these sweet drawings. They gifted us, the staff, saying how delighted they were and how grateful they were to have been provided the opportunity. And these are their words. They said, "We learned a lot. Thank you so much to all of you." So that really touched my heart. Also, I witnessed a very high level of engagement when there was a pizza-making lesson. So everybody loves pizza, and it was just wonderful to watch all of these young students collaborate with each other. It was numeracy in action, watching them measure and have to divide. Okay, there's six people, right, in my team? How many people would that be? That would be a piece, and what will that look like? Making new friends. And they were even so respectful of each other's dietary requirements. So they were checking in with each other and saying, "Okay, well, you can't eat that, so we're not putting that on pizza." It was just wonderful to watch this in action. They were thriving again, and we use that word. Everybody was joyful and just so delighted to be a part of this. And of course, I think the best part for everybody at the end was to be able to eat the pizza. Those pizzas were huge. This was honestly such an amazing opportunity to bear witness to, to watch these students achieve success through learning and to flourish and thrive and feel that sense of belonging and connection, as I mentioned initially, that we all want and we all yearn for. I do believe that this summer program epitomized that. So I hope that this resonates with you, and I hope that you can continue to be in a heart-centered place. I know it's sometimes hard to afford meeting, but we can, we can do it. Because at the end of the day, we're, we're in service of students. And I always hope that we can be student-centered, and that's what this program was about, being 100% student-centered. So thank you.
So as mentioned, this was our first year. This was a pilot this year. And I think just drawing from feedback and thoughts from the team that supported the program this year, our hope is to continue it for this coming school year and learn from our experiences and how to improve it and get better. So excited by the possibility for this coming summer, and I'm hoping that Sanji and Sam will be part of it as well. So that concludes our presentation. Are there any questions that could come out?
I, I do, David, thank you. I thank you for spending your summer with the middle school children that you did. And I have to say, you know, when you think of what's important about learning, it is belonging and connection. And I can feel that that's what happened for the students that attended the program in the summer. And I would love to, and I don't know if I can track something like this, but, you know, I'd love to see if the students that came and were connected and learned in the summer went back to their school. How do they feel differently about school? Or do they feel differently about school? Or how, how, how did the program impact them like two, three months later? So if you ever have the opportunity, David and team, to kind of get that feedback, it would be really interesting to see the kind of impact. Because we all know, you know, when you, when you're in that type of environment, students don't just, they don't just grow academically, they grow as people. So a huge thank you for doing that and putting yourselves out on a limb to do the first summer program. And yeah, if you could ever find out how they're doing after the fact, that would be, that would be great. And were all middle schools represented, or was it a concentration of certain schools?
Yeah, I would say, I'm trying to reflect back. I think most, most schools were represented. I think some might have been represented more than others. I think that was also based on location as well. I think we tried to have a central location. We're in the county and team of trying to find somewhere centrally located. I do know that we had a bunch of students who had, who came from a combined family and, and one was living in our district, another one was living in Suk. And I understand a lot of that student arriving twice a week from Suk on the bus. So some students were admitted coming in as well. It was, it was great to see that.
Wonderful, yes, thank you. Thank you so much, and thank you for coming tonight. Although there's not a lot of people in the audience, I'm sure there's a lot watching online, so thank you so much. Yes, you give them around.
And I'd like to just say, welcome to the town of Bay. We did a bit of an introduction. Do you want to introduce yourself?
Hello, my name is Anthony Fox, Assistant Manager. My traditional name is Simala, and her name, her face translates right like the sun. I'm Songi Nation member. I have two children that go to S P 1, S P 3 next September.
Thank you. Welcome out of Bay. And, you know, when we started, I, I'm going to have to go back and take a look at this recording. I just want to make sure that I did the territorial knowledge. And, and I, you know, it becomes such a part of how you start meetings, which is good that you, you know, but after the fact, I don't know if I actually did. So I'm going to do it again. And if it's twice, that's fine. If it's only once, then this is the right thing to do. So I'd like to, once again, hopefully, recognize the Songi people, the Songi, the Swannal Nation, whose traditional territories we live, we learn, and do our work, and we're meeting on tonight. And the next part of our agenda is a community presentation. And I don't think the speaker is here, so I'm going to move on to C, which is my monthly report. And I, it was when I started to look back at what I was up to after the June board meeting, there were a lot of meetings in July. And so I'd like to just highlight some of them. So the, one of the focuses that has been taking up some of my time is looking at the electoral, the possibility of changing our electoral areas. So I've been working with task force, and we met twice during summer. I also met with members of Songi Nation. I think that was twice in July, and then also the Swannal Nation, and to receive feedback and have conversations about how this could possibly look. I'll give you a bit of an update on where we are with that. If people have been following the news or the school district website, it won't be news. The, the, how this originally started was that a counselor from the township of Swannal had written a letter to the minister, which was followed up with letters from every municipality and Songi Nations, Swannal Nations, saying to the Minister of Education to, to ask me to create a task force to look at possible changes to how our at-large electoral system could look. And the suggestion was to look at the electoral areas such as Sancho, Suktu, and this 44, 45 other districts across the province. And so that task force has been meeting. We had an online opportunity for feedback from August 5th until September 11th. And last week, we had a public engagement meeting where there were representatives from Swannal Nation, Songi Nation, and all of the municipalities, as well as leaders from the school district to have conversations with the public about those changes. And what we have about, or what we're about to start doing is looking through the feedback. We received about 265 responses online, and then we have some feedback from the meeting and see if there are any, any trends. So, so from what I've seen so far, the responses online are primarily positive. There were a lot of questions, and with those questions, we created a Q and A that is still on the website, I hope, I think. And the, from those questions, we will just keep adding anything that we come up with while we're meeting over the next little while to look at the results. If there are going to be any changes, we have to submit a proposal to the minister by the end of September. This allows for about a month to approve or ask questions or deny the proposal before the end of October, which is when she would have to have her decision made by, because it has to be done in the year in advance of the next municipal election. So that's where we are with that. And another thing that I've been doing over the summer is working on a committee with the Beasties School Trustees Association. And you're going to very mention this when we start the meeting of policies too. The trustees association has been undertaking some work. They have done a jurisdictional scan of policies across the, across the province. Many school districts, there's about 25 that have, that have actually modernized and updated their bylaws, policies, and admin procedures. And what they are suggesting, the trustees association after doing this jurisdictional scan, is that there are quite a few that need to update their policies, and Greater Territorial School District is definitely one. We have policies from the 70s, and we're going to actually look at a couple from the 70s days tonight. And we also, we have to win the prize, Greater Territorial School District, along with the Surrey School District, for the most policies in the province. And research indicates that really to have effective policies and effective governance, you should have about 20 to 25 policies that so that the board really understands what their role is. that so that the board really understands what their role is. And then everything else is covered by admin procedures. So many districts have an undertaking that works, so we, we don't have to start from scratch. The committee that I'm on with the trustees association, we will continue to meet. And one of the things that we're all hoping comes out of this very soon is a framework for school districts to use to overlay their policies, bylaws and admin procedures. So what is the policy, what is the bylaw? And what are the absolutely essential ones you need? And which ones should actually be administrative procedures, not a board policy? So I'll update the, this group and the public on the work that, that committee undertakes once we meet again. So we'll be meeting again in October. And I'll be back in October explaining a little bit more about that. Other things that I've been working on, I've had a partner, a partner to the C sixty-one meeting just last week where we talked about policies, the electoral changes and talking about budget. We're already starting to talk about budget and we'll look at that budget process with our partner groups in October. And I think the highlight was going through Cedar Hill. Has, everybody here is well aware that we opened a brand new middle school. And it was really exciting. Superintendent Witten and I went through the building. Principal Mary Antropov did an excellent job of touring us around. And I just wanna highlight a few things. Is it completely finished? No, but not receding path flyers or whatever. That's how it works, right? We open a building and yes, there's baseboards that still need to be done. And some groundwork that still needs to be done. The old building needs to come down. But when we went through there, our body afternoon, we saw very excited, very focused students. We went into classrooms, we talked to teachers. We, we walked around the entire school. It's beautiful. And it's very welcoming, the color scheme, just the sound moving on. Like it, we were in a building, I don't know how many hundreds of kids, and it didn't feel like that. The indigenous welcoming room is completed and it is stunning. The, the learning commons was filled with boxes, but I know that those will be unpacked and the learning commons will be ready to, to go sometime in the near future. So I just want to say a huge thank you to everyone. From the staff, to the students, to the parents, to the facilities department who I know were working overtime to make sure that we could open, even though it was a couple of days late. It was remarkable what was happening in that building. And it's just so exciting to see a purpose-built middle school. So if you get a chance, stop by. I know they would be happy to see people in their, in their building. And I think that's where I'll stop with my trustee report. And we'll move on to the annual board reports, which are in your package. Now, what, what this sheet is, is I wanted people to know what comes with one board. There are certain reports and certain decision-making points in this school calendar year that on this annual board report document that I think will be helpful. It certainly will help me, us as official trustee and also senior leaders to, to know what's coming up in each of the meetings. That some of it's mandatory at that time of the year for ministry reports and others like the school road plans, we've kind of separated those out. So this is kind of a snapshot of some of the work that we'll be looking at at future board meetings throughout the, the school year. So that completes C. And I'm going to move to D, which is board committee. And get right into the audit committee. And Lenora is still here. And we had an audit committee meeting last week where we took a substantial amount of time to go through a number of reports. And I had quite a few questions. And I will repeat those questions, but I do want to compliment the finance team again, just on, you know, I looked at reports like this ten years ago when I was here. And they're so much easier to read now. So thank you very much for the user-friendly reports that are in the package. And we've got a number of motions that are before us from the audit committee. And from the audit committee, those reports count to the board for approval. So we're gonna work our way through the motions and also have some comments for the people in this room and for the general public as we, as we move through. We won't do it in the same amount of detail as we did with the audit committee, but there are some highlights that will come up. So I'd like to move over to Katrina to talk a little bit about the, the first motion.
Thank you. I found a spot in the agenda package that I think makes the most sense to look at as we look at the language that's in this motion. So if you want to turn page seventy-three of the agenda package, it's actually within the notes to the financial statements. It's the twenty-third. And it's called internally restricted surplus operating fund. Now, there's like a lot of information that's listed on this page and the next page. But if you take a look at the bottom of page seventy-four, you can see that total, that nine million, nine hundred and seventy-five thousand eighty-one dollars. And just to highlight what's involved with that number, we have broken it into different categories. So the first category is funds that are restricted due to the nature of constraints on the funds. So those would be things like unspent grants that we've received or professional development funds where we're required to carry those forward year over year. The next category is restricted for anticipated unusual expenses identified by the board. I would highlight probably the biggest item that's in there and that's a potential arbitration settlement. So not something that happens every day, but it's something that we need to put some money aside in case of a settlement in the future. And then the next section is the largest one. It's restricted for operations that are spanning over multiple school years. So in this section, we have policies that allow schools to carry over funds at the end of the year if they're unspent. This year, this year was twenty-five thousand for elementary and fifty thousand for middle and secondary. So, and so that's included in there. Also, our indigenous education department has targeted funds that are specifically spent by them and under advisement from the IOC. So those funds are in there. School and departments have projects that are spanning over multiple years. Facilities related items. So we have corals that need to be moved. We had a dump truck that we needed to purchase because the other one is no longer functioning. A recent ministerial order requires us to purchase A Ds for our secondary schools and more by the end of this year. And then for all of our schools, I think by the start of the next school year. So we put some money aside for that. And then the biggest items that are in there are the funds that we've set aside to balance the budget in the current year. And the good news is that we also had an extra two point three million dollars of surplus that we could carry forward to apply against the deficit in twenty-six, twenty-seven. So as we start to now work through the budget development process for twenty-six, twenty-seven, we're estimating our deficit to be above five point eight million. This two point three million will be applied against that, to bring that number down to three point five million. The other piece of the motion is the unrestricted operating surplus contingency. And that is at one million, two hundred and fifty thousand. And last year was at a million. So we've been able to add two hundred and fifty thousand to that number to bring it up a little bit. And I think that's probably where we.
Could you just talk a little bit about the contingency and why we have to have?
Yeah.
And how are these, should that?
There is a ministry policy that was initiated in twenty-one. It's been a while. And then we also created some board policy to align with the ministry policy to have a contingency set aside. And it's just there so that if something were to happen that we could continue to operate as normal without having to midway through the year try to meet budget reductions. Our, the, our policy and the ministry policy recommends that our contingency would be between two and four percent of our prior year operating expenses. So we should have a minimum of about five million in that account. So at one point three, let's say, we are definitely short of that target. It is challenging, like you have a structural deficit to put a lot of money into that contingency because the more money that goes in there, the more reductions you're gonna have to make the next year. So we, we did our best to sort of balance that and put some in there. So it shows that we're working towards that bigger number and hopefully we can continue to get.
Thank you. And I, I just need to point out, I was so excited to hear we could put two point three million towards the deficit, but we still have a three point five million dollar structural deficit, which is not, not exciting. But I'm glad that we, we could do, we could just a little way a little bit add, but I think for, I think that a top year, if nothing changes to that number. Thank you Katrina. So the, the motion reads that the official trustee of school district number sixty-one, grade Victoria approves the appropriation of eleven million, two hundred and twenty-five thousand eighty-one dollars of the operating surplus as follows internally restricted, nine million, nine hundred and seventy-five thousand eighty-one. Unrestricted contingency one point, or yeah, one point two five million. And that motion was carried. Moving on to Katrina to the next motion, which is the audited financial statements.
Um, I too would just like to acknowledge the work that was done by Julie and Remender and the team. You see that the bundle of papers and it looks like they make it look so easy. And it's just a huge, huge amount of work. And so I just wanted to acknowledge all of that word myself. Very grateful for that. I don't have a lot of comments on the statements themselves. The financial statement discussion and analysis, I think, is, explains all the differences which we did go through. I don't know if there are any questions in particular that we have on that.
No, I don't.
One thing we did after our, our meeting, we talked about how are, how we compare to like the provincial average. On one of the sheets is page one, or eighteen. That you see the page number. It's within the financial statement discussion analysis, the one that has the infographics. And a question did have come up around like how, how is our, ninety-seven, ninety-seven is the page? And how did we stack up kind of against the provincial average? When we look at the areas that are working on like instruction, administration, operations and transportation? And we have talked about this in our budget meetings before. But just wanna highlight that when it comes to instruction, our total spending, that's eighty-five point five percent. And compared to the provincial average of maybe three point one. So we do have more expenditures in that category. Under administration, we spend two point six percent of our funding, whereas the provincial average is three point nine percent, so lower than the provincial average. Operations is very close. So we're at eleven point two percent and our provincial average is eleven point one. And then transportation is the last category. We're at point seven percent and the provincial average is one point nine. Mainly because Vermont is urban district, so there are limited number of student transportation that we provide.
Thank you. When we were in the audit committee meeting, I was quite fixated on this particular page. I was on that special. But it, it's, I think it's a really good graphic to kind of take a look at in a snapshot on a page, where the money comes from and where it goes. And then information of our student population and how we show our spending. It's, um, if you know nothing about our budget and you looked at this page, it would tell you a lot. So this was one of the items I was talking about in the beginning that I was so happy to see change from way back when I was here before that this didn't exist. And it's quite a, it's quite a reader-friendly document. And the infographics are also really helpful. So thank you. I've been there Julie and Katrina for that. So that's, if, does anyone else on the table have questions before I move into that motion or comments? Your partners? No? Okay. I'm going to read the motion that the official trustee of school district sixty-one, grade Victoria approves the audited financial statements of this school district sixty-one, grade Victoria for the year end on June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. And for the official trustee, the superintendent, secretary of treasurer, we've authorized her fix their statements to the statements where applicable on, off the board. And that may be something that needs carrying. Now we move to another financial issue. So I'm gonna pass it to Katrina for the next motion to just, um, discuss a little bit about.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry. Did you carry the motion for the financial statement discussion analysis? Am I?
No, that's, that's, I just wanted to understand.
I guess that's what I'm going on. Yeah.
Okay, that's fine. I can, I can then carry that now. So the official trustee, school district sixty-one, grade Victoria approves the financial statement discussion and analysis report for the year ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. That's carried. The official trustee, school district sixty-one, it says the multi-year financial plan is next. So we're passing to you for that.
If you were part of the twenty-five, twenty-six budget development process, you would have seen a version of the multi-year financial plan. It has now been updated. And it's been updated to include any of the one-time and ongoing budget decisions that were made in the twenty-five, twenty-six process. So if there was a one-time decision made, it would be reflected in twenty-five, twenty-six and then removed for future years. So that's been done. It's also been adjusted for our enrollment projections and other known changes in revenues. So for example, international education tuition, there's any changes in leases, those would be in there. We also made a couple of adjustments that were fairly significant. And trustee elections in a year, we've added that in for the twenty-six, October twenty twenty-six election. That's in twenty-six, twenty-seven. And we also updated what we're calling like our technology plan. So the, the refresh cost for educator and student devices based on our current ratio plus also infrastructure. But what we haven't done is we haven't changed anything related to the per people funding amount. We haven't incorporated any wage increases or associated revenue. And we haven't changed the investment income because we don't know what those rates will be. We haven't changed benefits because we also don't know those rates. We haven't changed benefits because we also don't know those rates. Uh, we've made no inflationary adjustments. And just to be super clear, we haven't made any adjustments um related to potential future reductions. Nothing like that is in there. It's literally twenty five, twenty six um carried over with the adjustments that I've mentioned. So and uh if you look in the agenda package on page one fifty four and you look at the projected budget for twenty six, twenty seven, you'll see that three point five million dollar deficit that I mentioned. Um, that's what we'll be working with as we start our budget development process for for that year. And then uh looking to twenty twenty seven, twenty twenty eight. Uh, we don't know if we'll have any surplus to apply against that year at this point. Uh, so we've got five point four million dollar deficit. And just a caveat, as we look at this, um, they are very preliminary numbers. Obviously, we haven't even they haven't even begun the work on that um budget. And as that work gets going, um, there are always things that come up that need to be adjusted in the budget for when we are going to.
Thank you. Uh, before I go to the motion, any questions, comments? Okay, going over the motion then, that the official trustee of school district number sixty one, grade Victoria accepts the multi-year financial plan uh twenty twenty five, twenty to twenty twenty eight, that motion is carried. I mean, one last motion and it's one that sums up every year. Do you want to speak to Sophie Report?
Uh, just have a couple of comments. Um, this is a report that's um done on a cash basis, so it's a little bit different from some of our other reports, so um, if there's any retroactive um payments for anyone, it it will show up in this report, even if it was related to another fiscal year. Just mention that. The other thing I want to mention too is um, uh also under remuneration is the expense piece. Um, sometimes we think that any expenses that those would just be expenses that provide a personal benefit for the employee, but it 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 includes any expenses that are related to that individual's um job. So if they're required to attend meetings, they're screwed at that meeting and then costs get allocated to them. Also, if they have to travel um to attend meetings um as a representative of the school district, those get associated with that individual's stuff.
Thank you. And uh if there's reimbursement for those uh meetings, that doesn't show up. That's something I think that's important. So if you attend a meeting eh for an association and meetings in Vancouver and the district puts out money and the association is the district bat, that does not show up. Like it's still it's it's still considered an expense. It doesn't come off of uh a person's expenses. So uh any questions, comments on the social report before I move on? Okay. The official trustee of school district sixty one, grade Victoria approves schedules as required by the financial information app for the period July first twenty twenty four to June thirtieth, twenty twenty five, and further that the approved schedules will be posted to the district website. That is carried. And we're going to move now to superintendent's report. Over to you.
There you go. Thank you very much. Uh, you will see on page one ninety three of the packet my monthly report. Um, I can say that even though we're into the third week, we started the third week of school. There've been many activities that have occurred and you'll see some of those represented in the report. Um, lots of support from the community as students have returned as well as uh lots of great back-to-school activities that are that have already happened and then ones that are planned for the rest of this month. Um, as I always like to do is to provide gratitude um and a particular gratitude in this month was one is our convention and that is all of the work that occurred over the summer. From facilities department, it was a shortened month or shortened summer um based on the calendar. And so I know they had lots of projects to complete, both with the Cedar Hill, but also with all of the other projects and upgrades and ground work and things that that took place. So I know um gratitude on behalf of the whole district to the Thistleview staff throughout their work. Um, also, just want to know, we have a um student advisory uh representative council, which has fifteen grade ten, eleven and twelve students that meet on a monthly basis. The first meeting was tonight before this meeting and then we had all fifteen um students there. It was such a fantastic way to gather uh feedback from students, to also hear what's important to them, what they want to talk about in the monthly meetings. Uh, we rotate through all of the schools. So we have, we have a meeting, we have a tour. We have some food that we share and we do updates and um the care also between the students tonight was exceptional. What's happening at other schools? How can we do it better? How how can we do it differently? Sharing happens. And then you also um look at what is the most important and and learning that they want to explore. So in the past, I can't speak for this year's group because we haven't got there yet, but in the past, we've looked at um mental health wellness, we've looked at equity, diversity and inclusion, um climate. Uh, we always spend a lot of time talking about the budget, what's most important for them as students. Um, and they represent their school, they represent themselves, and they also represent their learning and they've gone through um our school. So just very um interesting hearing from students and the important voice that they bring. And it was a great meeting to start with tonight. Also, uh, a principal or a vice principal came with them from each of the schools. So they too get to hear that. They get to go back to the school and talk with their students about what's important. So um the end of October is our last meeting and we're meeting at Spectrum. That was a great one. Great meeting.
Great, thank you. Actually, that was going to be my question is what coming back then again and they're sorry answer. Uh, thank you. All right. Uh, how would we move on to um B? Now, this is a pretty big topic and has a lengthy two reports that are included in the package and um superintendent written, are you are you going to start and then pass it along to others?
Yes, yeah, for sure. Thank you. So uh there is a memo in the packet that does give an overview about what the enhanced student learning report is. Uh, this is an annual report that we submit into the ministry each year prior to October first. Uh, this particular year, we've moved into a three-year reporting cycle, which means we report a full report um every three years. And um we were selected and we volunteered to be the full report for this year. So the two years following will be interim reports. Uh, this S, this what we term as the S T A R report is really, it's a public document. It's a continuous learning um and improvement document. It's looking at data. And and we as a team, directors, principals, uh vice principals and senior leadership look at the data that we receive and we look for areas that we need to focus in on. And then we make plans to that. And we also look at budgets and staffing that that are required to to attend the league. So um it is a collective. The report reflects it being a collective piece. Um what we're noticing and we have noticed and we need to do better on is uh the provisions of support and also the achievement levels um with students who identify as having indigenous ancestry. We know um through the data that they're not achieving at um the same rate as other learners. And this is something that we're paying attention to or something that we need to do better in. And we need to put different resources in there. And then we need to reflect on whether those resources and whether those supports are working. Um, and we need to look at things differently in the system. So that is something that collectively we discuss. We solve the results and and we need to address and do a better job in that. Some areas we're doing well in, um, and that's also a goal to pay attention to and and know what we're doing there. Um, and reflect and adjust as we move forward. So I will pass it over to deputy superintendent Art, who will walk us through um a little bit more detail on the enhanced student learning report. And also have potentially some other people care.
Okay. Thank you, Superintendent Witten. As I mentioned, this report was co-developed and created by members of our senior leadership team, directors in our district and district principals and vice principals. So it was a collaborative effort and I think it's reflected through that. Um, it reported analyzes trends that we are seeing across our district and it's a snapshot in time and uses both provincial and local data in the report when looking at it. Um, the report shows that we've seen improvements in areas from last year. And at the same time, there's significant work to do in other areas, especially focused on priority learners which are children and youth in care, students with disabilities, diversibilities and indigenous learners. Based on the results found in our school report, we have intensified our focus on literacy across our district with a with a particular focus on those priority winners that I mentioned. This year, we will continue to have district uh early learning collaboration teachers working in support of our primary elementary schools. But we have also expanded to increase the support that's shared between Craig Flora Elementary and Shoreline Literacy School to a one point oh total FTE that will be shared by those. Uh, this year, we're asking that all forty seven of our schools K through twelve have a school goal that is focused specifically on literacy. We also have created a multi-language learners development class for high school students whose English language ability is preventing them from being able to access district curriculum in a successful way. In addition to these literacy supports, the day shows that we also need to focus on literacy. And as a result, we'll be implementing some strategies throughout the year. Some of them are things such as trophy offerings for K to three literacy teachers. A four-part online series for grade six little school literacy teachers. And at the high school level, we want to promote early and on-time completion of grade ten grade ten numeracy assessments. It's an assessment that students have to complete by the time they graduate. And we seem to see a trend of students completing it past grade ten, which is fine, and they graduate and they do it, but it doesn't actually give us the data at the time of where they're at uh and and the literacy abilities. So we want to see students complete that hopefully in their grade ten year as as is recommended. As mentioned, the report shows uh where a district is doing well, at the same time, where is the district we need to focus on improvements. Some some examples of where we went well are our graduation. It continues to be stable on high and is consistently at where both the provincial averages. This year, it remains around eighty six percent of all students who graduate. Another area of strength is our sense of welcomeness, safety and belonging um by our students. We have seen a three-year increase in the sense of belong by sense of belonging at school by all of our students. We are above the provincial average and all students feeling safe. And we have seen a ten percent uh percentage point increase in all indigenous students feeling welcome in our school. In addition, the number of children in youth in care who access dual credit or career programs has has increased from last year. And this, we believe, is a direct result of the intentional work that our career center staff have done to expand those offerings. And we're looking to expand those offers for other part of English this year, and hopefully we'll see the same result. The S T A report also shows areas we need to focus and continue to focus on. Some examples of those, in addition to the literacy and numeracy that I mentioned earlier, or to the numeracy that I mentioned earlier is some of our literacy results for priority learners are a area of concern. Indigenous students, for example, perform nineteen percentage points below all learners in literacy test assessments. And students with diversibilities and disabilities and children losing care remain fifteen to twenty percentage points behind district averages. These are examples of results that we need to do better in. It's also important that we look at the distinction space approach while looking at the data. For example, our the indigenous students in our district uh have shown an increase in dogwood completion rates by ten percent to sixty three percent, a five-year high for us. But that sixty three percent is still twenty three percent below our overall student graduation rate for dogwood significantly. And and another example was indigenous students FSA literacy exceeds the provincial average for the second year enrollment. And they have seen an increase of six percentage points. And students with diversibilities and disabilities have seen an increase of ten percentage points. But they still remain roughly eighteen percent below our our overall student, our all resident student. So though we're seeing improvement in these results, there is still a significant amount of work we need to do and we continue to need to improve in these areas. So this is an example of some of the work that we need to do this year. We made it a priority to focus, make this a focus at every one of our meetings throughout the year. As superintendent, and what you mentioned, we need to look at data, we need to look at the strategies we're implementing, we need to review how things are going over the next seven months. And we want to see improving in these areas.
Thank you. Uh, I have some questions. I will open it up to other questions as well. Um. Can you, so the format for this for or is it um managed or can you change the I'm just looking at the graphs. Some some of them are hard to read and and then the tables are actually really clear. Uh, so is it, is there anything we can do with this?
Yeah, so unfortunately, the tables and graphs are provided by the ministry. Um, and so they are aware that um there is still we're going to do. And and to be fair, the tables and graphs that were provided last year were even more difficult to read. So guys, so there is improvement, um, but they have acknowledged that we'll continue to work on this. But they provide that data template to us to to use. Last year, there were no numbers, for example, no percentage of some of it. So you gotta add these. Yeah, so it's better, but not and that's a fair comment.
Thank that. Well, thank you. But uh and I was I mean, I think that in looking at both reports, I mean, it's a really, the district has a good job and an honest assessment. So yes, they're they particularly with indigenous students. The graduate has gone up substantially over years, but it's still substantially less than than the um the group as a whole. And and the same with uh literacy. So when you, when you look at the trend, the trend is 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 good. So with that trend and where it's going, what challenge? So you feel key things that you're doing, but they're working, what other things can you highlight that you're you're also doing to add to that trend to move those numbers up?
Yeah, great, great question. I think I asked director to sharpen the bullets uh to speak a little bit about our additional support we had in a very far short line around that as an example.
Okay, yeah, thank you. Um. One of the things that we've noticed um over the past few years was we've uh embedded into some of our schools early literacy collaboration teachers. So they're in a number of schools, including Craig Flora Elementary. Uh, uh, and last year, uh, there was point five FTE that went exclusively to grade five school support early literacy collaboration work and uh so we're seeing on early years um within in that school context. Um, this year, we've informed it's we've increased that time to an additional point five. So we've hired a one point oh FTE. And with that additional point five, yeah, we as uh FB superintendent Arts and superintendent, as I've mentioned, there is uh an inequity gap that we see for our indigenous students. And so that focus is really for indigenous learners at Craig Flora Elementary. We're using that other point five to really uh support those learners uh through their school-based team. You know, what we know about those students, what are we intentionally doing to address those literacy needs? And then being able to bridge that into Shoreline. And so I think what will be really uh wonderful to see, I think, in future years is some of those students that are getting that support at Craig Flora, if they continue to require some support, um, it will be uh supported at Shoreline with that same teacher. So I think that relationship piece is also really paramount. And so that teacher would be able to support those schools, having that connection, that bridging uh uh relationship, I think, as well. So that FTE, that point five will go mostly to Craig Flora, but also be supported for the number of students in that Shoreline as well.
Right. So this is someone they already know?
This will be somebody they'll get to know this year. This is our first start as a brand new, brand new staff member. A wonderful educator and we're really excited to do that.
Great, thank you. And uh when you were talking about um having every school have a literacy goal, and and were you referring to elementary and primary secondary?
That's right. Yeah, that's correct. All all K through twelve in their school goals. And they may have one in one school goal. But one of the goals needs to be focused specifically on literacy and the data that reflects their learning community and where there's where they're seeing gaps and how they can address that.
So what when we start looking at the growth plans and they come to forge over the next ten months, we'll see some similar, some different depending on what there because you're, I mean, you look at literacy, there's many aspects, aspects to literacy.
Uh, I, we will see that work happen over the year. So our, so some schools that there are a lot of work in the spring, at the end of the year on their school. I, I, we will see that work happen over the year. So our, so some schools that there are a lot of work in the spring at the end of the year on their schools. So when we introduce this here at the start of the school year, so some schools are doing it here in the fall, and we'll see that. By next year, we will see all schools for sure, but I think we will see a significant amount of improvement in the goal, but it is expected to happen over the course of this year as in local opinion.
Thank you. That that helps clarify a little bit. Thanks. Um, just a couple of other uh questions. So the. I was starting to see the uh welcome state, hidden belonging. I mean, we just had a wonderful presentation of healthy belonging, we know that. Kids feel safe and they have a sense of belonging, learning makes place much easier. So that was good to see. Um, I have a couple of questions on the um part two, so yeah, okay. Uh. And I think this one might be for Dr. Wilton. Yeah, and. On page fifteen and second, I'm not sure where it is on online, but it talks about the implementation of spirit of alliances, the almost framework locally developed off it and um. Dr. Wilton and I had a conversation about um what what that means and and how. How powerful that uh can be when when teachers and students understand what it stands for. So. Um, can you kind of give us an explanation? What that is and how it works?
I can. I'm gonna tie threads together, just as I, as we look at Sler and kind of moving through, I think it's really important to acknowledge that. The continuation of the conversations that are happening with each one of the houses and the IUC. I think that's important because as we bring in. The why of why we're focusing on indigenous learners, right? What does that look like for impact to improve results? What does cultural safety look like? What does it mean to examine culturally relevant resources uh and within and through the curriculum at all grade levels? Um, I think that's where it kind of ties into the conversation I'm gonna have tonight. So we acknowledge, right, we've been working with community and at our last IUC meeting in August, we acknowledged and we moved through our data. And our story is really important to know that. And our story, um, there's gaps in in opportunities of learning for indigenous learners within our school district. And that we have to improve those gaps to make sure that we can continue. And how that's all responsibility of everyone, right? And so we have that conversation and I'm really proud of where that conversation has evolved over the last five years within this district. I think that part of our strategic plan uh that was really vetted, really looks at what does it mean to be culturally responsive? And I think that's something that community is holding a high standard to for our district, and so it comes back through community to ask us, what does that look like? How are you doing that as a as a school board or as a department or as a collective family? Um, which ties into spiritual lights, right? Because I think that their familiarity over a long history of time in being in a relationship with this whole district. And so I entered into this school district seven years ago, coming in this point, I said, of school year here. Um, and I entered in um stewarding uh some of the work that's already been happening for a very long time, right? And taking it, you know, a little bit further, right? As as things emerge and things grow and curriculum shifts and all that. Um, and one of those things is the spirit of life, right? So the spirit of life is is not new to to us as a school district uh prior to becoming. Uh, many schools were using the framework for spirit of alliances, right? And that was developed through the Aboriginal enhancement agreement. Um, that had community involvement all the way through developing that. And then that developed, you know, the different animals that were part of the spirit of life and that that framework was used within school communities to be able to bring in. You know, concepts in and around indigenous education and looking at, you know, a different way of being able to be engaged. However, an opportunity came. Just after COVID, as we're emerging out of COVID, um, from the Ministry of Education. And so the Ministry of Education was looking at supporting uh mental health grants within school districts as we were returning back to the classroom. And we're returning back to the classroom, not only as all students, but also looking at populations of students, right? So what does that look like for indigenous learners coming back to the classroom post-COVID? And what can be done to support that in a really holistic way? So the Ministry of Education childcare provided school districts mental health grants. And those mental health grants that were provided required, and so I say required because the ministry's letter, it required. That those grants involve indigenous community in the in the development and planning in and around how those funds would be expended and developed with community. And so with that, um, our department became involved through that that method. And so. We went to the four houses at that time to be able to ask them whom from each of their houses. They would like to be able for us to engage with as a community development project. And so there was a committee formed and the committee was two years. And so it was two-year working task group. That looked at wellness and indigenous wellness from all different areas, right, including what does that look like for Songwe's as well nation children coming and returning back to the school environment? What does that look like for frameworks that we've already engaged with? How are we going to do that in the new thing? So working group comes had come together and for over several years, we used a portion of the mental health grant that had come in from the ministry. Just to support not only that community engagement of frequent meetings, but also to pay for the other areas to be able to have community members join us in that. And then also to to revisit and revise um the model a little bit, right? The model had had a great, you know, first step in the district and the schools were familiar with it. But then we took it to the extra step, which was then to look at it from uh supporting wellness framework for for not only indigenous learners, but for all learners. But it was going to be an indigenous framework that was gonna be guiding a holistic support wellness framework that all schools could use. And so um through all of the consultation, uh, it came to consensus over the those two years of working. To to present the the this model, right? So this model and this framework has been um. Been active last year. It's been active last year, meaning that it rolled out in September of last year, right? It was ready to roll out. Um, and it's been revised in lots of beautiful ways. And I'll share a little bit of what that looks like for this year. Um, but it's important to know the logo, right? So we commissioned a local artist, Jessica Joseph. And she used the four animals and spiritual lights, which is, we did not want to drift from that. The community didn't want to drift from that. They felt that that was relevant to that student had familiar to that over several years. Um, but the the vision had come that it was going to be um a chocolate lily. And so the image of the spirit of alliance is chocolate lily. And so the chocolate lily really, when the community started talking and all of uh even when we sat with elders. Right, was is that the ball of the chocolate lily was the community and it was holding the stories, it was holding the nurture of of our children. And that as chocolate lily, um, is significant, is significant here, Waukun territory, not not in my community. I I don't know where chocolate lilies are. But they're here and they're and they're an indigenous plant to this community. And so the imagery was really important. The four animals represent the holistic health and wellbeing. And then the 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 different bulbs actually also have meaning. So the different bulbs actually mean the different layers and levels of our school district. So it goes from early learning to elementary to middle and secondary years. And so then that way, this framework not only was going to be, um. It wasn't going to be positioned to a level. It was going to be through all three levels uh for all students. And so we moved from there. Um, the conversation also was to ensure that it held and and hold and held space for the five hours of indigenous pedagogy. And so really working with school communities to understand as we tie that cultural safety, right? So the five bars is is that what does respect look like within a school and community, also within within a model framework? What is the responsibility of self and others, right? So if I'm an educator, what is my responsibility to this work? And if I'm a student, what is my responsibility to this work? Uh, reciprocity, right? So it's not extractionary and it's not an extractionary relationship. Uh, relationships, because the foundation of everything in education is founded on the basis of of relationships and relevance, right? So how is this relevant for a Waukun student? How is this relevant for a Songwe student? How is this relevant for for a member from a different community, right? So how is this relevant? And so um five hours indigenous pedagogy was not coined by us or by the working group. It is a, it is a very historical. Um, framework that was developed by indigenous scholars as as indigenous students started to enter into fourth secondary. So this has been around for over four years. And so that's important. Um, but it's merged into now having spirit of lights kits, right? So in order to do that, at the end of last year, um, we have teacher consultants at every level, elementary, middle, secondary. And their role as indigenous teacher consultants is to be able to look at the curriculum, to be able to work with school communities. And current practicing school teachers in every grade level to be able to look at how the curriculum's been revised to include indigenous concepts. And what the teacher's responsibility is to be able to to move that forward. And so they provide opportunities to examine current relevant resources. That are written by indigenous authors and scholars and to make sure that it's it's applicable. And so the spirit of our alliance resource kits were born um last year. And they were born with the intention that they would go out to every school community, because another document that was also working alongside this. Was a document for the last two years about decolonizing uh school library collections, right? And so through that, um, we wanted to make sure that school communities were starting to look at their collections and how could you use this kit, no matter if you're in a secondary school? Or if you're in middle school, right, or an elementary school, what that might look like to engage with that? So we've given and provided all of the relevant resources that gets us school up and going through that. And we started this year off in September with all teacher librarians on the September checks. And we provided every school a kit, right, that got out the door with that. And so um I'm incredibly excited because I think that we're seeing meaningful engagement. It's not, um, it's not performative. It is really truly looking at how do we use an indigenous wellness framework? Be comfortable with an indigenous wellness framework that's been bonded with the indigenous community. Um, and that we're using relevant resources to make that applicable. And so no matter what grade level you're in, you can have some kind of level of engagement. And just like I was sitting here talking with uh Vicki, right? She was sharing with me that they use the spirit of reliance framework to open up their first week of school, right? And all students engaged with that. So I think more come, but um but it's had a lot of hard work put into it. And I'm incredibly proud of of all of those that have participated in developing it, that continue to champion it. And that it's not just an indigenous uh department initiative, but it's a collective school, family and district initiative with community. And so, more come.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Lino. I would love to hear more. Um. In the coming months. So how did Lanford use the spirit of alliances and the kit with their students? And and how successful was that? I mean, you could have a teacher board meeting, students talking about. Uh, not just, not just um staff, but it it, I would love to to hear a little bit more. Um, thank you for that really thorough. That that was, I had no idea. And I loved the um. The chocolate lily with the four animals inside. It's beautiful. It's a beautiful metaphor. So thank you so much. Yeah, thanks for sharing. Thanks. Uh, and that was the last question I had on on the Esper report. Um, really well done, really well written. And um, yeah, I thought it was very positive to have them too. Super important, you know, there's things we do well, there's things that we just have to keep working on, even when they improve, they're out there. So I'm really greatly appreciate that. Um, anything more from anyone? Any questions or comments before I get to the moment? So kudos to those people that work on it. I know a lot of work brought into that. All right. And so it's uh, there's a motion that the leadership trustee has the district sixty-one rated for approved. Enhancing learn, enhancing student learning and report twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six passed presented and that's carried. All right, back to you, Superintendent.
Okay, uh, we have uh regulation one, regulation fifty-one, forty-one point two one, which is on animal access. And that has a. The mountain on page two forty-six, the regulation requires that any report of an aggregate form each year. On the number of animal access incidents that have occurred in schools in the previous year. So. For twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five, so a year, there were three incidents. And typically, when we do have an incident. Um, at a level meeting or at a whole group meeting. Um, if it's relevant, we'll talk through what happened and we'll talk through the response and we'll make sure that we can all collectively learn from that. So. Um, we we continue to do and report anyway.
Okay. Okay, now we're at the point in the general rep. Alright. Week B. So revision or deletion of our policies. Uh, and I think actually before I I pass it back to the superintendent, uh, I just wanna make a couple of comments. Um. As I said in my report, you know, we win the prize for the most, uh, the oldest and the most policies and and. Many school districts right now are looking at updating their policies that reflect. Modernizing them, making them more current, but also, um. If if you don't do that as a whole, what you end up with is a lot of really outdated policies. And then new people come in and and nobody knows where they started first, so they keep them. And so you keep keeping these old policies that actually are, they they're nonsensical in some cases. And and irrelevant in others. So what I'd like to do uh now in um. Superintendent, Wilson, if you could, I know you have a very thorough memo there, is just if we could go through. The proposed deletions. Um, because I know when you look at it, with the policy. Sixty-one, twenty, learner-focused education, and the reaction could be. Oh, my gosh, how can you get rid of learner-focused focused education? Isn't that what you're all about? Uh, but when you look into what policy action was written for, it um, it doesn't mean that's not what we are. Or who or what we believe in, uh, it's it it's for a different purpose and time. So. And some of them are actually replaced by other policies. So I'd like, if you wouldn't mind, we'll go through them one by one. And I'll I'll see if there are questions or comments around the table and and then we'll look at them uh as a collective.
Or she, yeah, I do have to. And and so we're. I won't go over the memo. It is on page uh two forty-seven of the pack up, but really, when we're looking at each of the policies, we'll start with policy six to one twenty, which is the learner-focused education and. Um, written in nineteen ninety-five, uh, so I can't speak to. Why and when and how it was written. I can speak to now in a current context is absolutely be focused on uh. Student-centered um education. We have a uh strategic plan that really speaks specifically about ensuring all students have um. Access to uh learning material and work that will will um allow for them to uh grow and develop. This one, though, is specific to a program that we no longer have in the district, and I don't know when we stop having in the district, but I know we don't. Um, I think the important parts of of this one in particular. Is that we're not, as you said, trustee Bell, we're not getting rid of having students at the center or work. We have actually uh very much. Curriculum that's been redesigned to make sure that there are multiple entry points for learners. And that those can come in a variety of way. Uh, classroom would offer differentiated instruction. They offer universal design for learning. It's contextual. It means the learner where they are with supports and services wrapped around. And so it isn't a policy that uh we have in program that represents. And so, um. I think any of these policies that are deleted, uh, this, the um important parts of them will continue to, whether they're pulled into a uh admin procedure or or admin regulation. It's not a loss to actually not have this particular policy. I think the nuggets that are super important are used in. A strategic plan, they're used in uh our school plans and our school goals. They're just not in a program called learner-focused education anymore. I remember the focus situation that you think was. Um, next one?
Please.
Uh, the next one I think is uh sixty-one, thirty-five point two. This one actually references a course that is no longer offered. It was the career personal planning. I remember that. I was in education around that time where it came out. We no longer offer that. We have um CLB and CLC, which has replaced it. Um, even if it has been replaced, I wouldn't recommend having the policy that's specifically about a course. Um, it's not governance and it could change again in a year. So um, that is another example of something that, um. The content, there are some elements of the content within the policy that are important to pay attention to. Um, it does reference choice regarding participation in classes when there's sensitive topics. I think those are always important to pay attention to and be mindful of, and perhaps again, pull into a future admin procedure. I think those are always important to pay attention to and be mindful of. And perhaps, again, pull into a future admin procedure. But not as a policy, as a standalone, and not one of references, of course, that is not offered in anywhere in the province, to my knowledge. It's not. In any secondary school. Um so you move on to sixty one sixty four point eight. Learning assistant program. This is very similar again to a uh the name of a program that was offered. We do continue to offer uh supports to students. So it's not by deleting the policy that we don't provide supports. And I think that's an important one. But it's not a program that we have.
Um it was written in nineteen seventy nine?
Yes. Student at that time, but not in in here. So again. Um there are many documents and many references that can outline the range of supports and services available to students as they go from. Three K all the way through, but again, not through this learning assistant program um and not represented in a policy. And we last year approved, I think it was in June, the inclusion policy that. And speaks to a larger picture. Yeah, certainly is referencing more relevant and updated language in what people would see and expect to see in classrooms now. And the uh learning resources for classrooms uh policy?
Yeah, this was just interesting. It's a bit different. Um this one, we actually did bring a policy forward last year and regulation rewritten. Had uh a lot of community consultation and a lot of feedback. Um and came to the board many times until we landed at the policy. This one, we inadvertently forgot to delete at the time. Uh and so we now have two conflicting writing policies. Speaking about the same thing, while one is written last year and one was not written last year. So again, uh. Is gets confusing when we have one written from nineteen eighty. That's a silver box. Thank you. Thank you. Any comments before I go to motion or questions? Norm, are you up to now there?
Oh, sorry. I just got attacked by the bug.
We don't need a pause here on that. You know, this this takes me back to hopefully having a framework where we can see what we look at policies, it's governance and and how how we can really. Um create the best framework and the best policy documents we can. Um. You know, in order, uh one of the things that uh. When the trustee said in the video is that is when we we look at governance and having, you know, twenty to thirties. Wrong policies that equals a successful work. So looking at some of these from the eighties and some from seventies. Uh it's we're just taking a little bit of stuff out. What I'm hoping we can end up doing is. Sort of overlaying what the framework is to our policies and see where we can go um. Uh as a district. So um I would um like to read the motion. No one else has done it. No problems down with her, okay? Um official trustees, school district sixty one, ready for Toria, through the deletion of the following word policies. Um sixty one twenty, sixty one thirty five point two, sixty one sixty four point eight and. Did I forget one? One, two. Thank you. Sixty one, sixty four point one. And that is carried. It's a small step, but maybe now service in first place. Okay, um. So this is the end of the um report from our superintendent and we'll move to Secretary Treasurer's financial report. And if if could you take us to go from A to to B to C, just take a follow way through. There's no motion in in there. So. Uh you can probably read through that.
Uh yeah, included in the agenda package this month, uh actually has three months of uh monthly financial reports. So we have further information, a report for June. And just a reminder that this monthly financial report will um. Reflect the final budget plus any adjustments, and that would include any adjustments that would be made uh at year end. Though unlike our financial statements that show our uh preliminary budget. And um for the June report, the revenue expenses are for the for the full fiscal year, so twelve months. And uh we're looking at uh the revenue. Page two hundred and fifty three, um recognize one percent more um revenue than what was um budgeted. And that does include the surplus that we would carry forward. And same with uh June twenty twenty four. Uh increases surplus and it was at uh. Seven hundred and fifty thousand or zero percent of the year, we're looking at one percent of the total. Expenses uh totals around page two fifty five and both years we were at five percent budget remaining. So be careful. And uh July. We so that will be just one month of activity and we're again being at preliminary budget. So we're just starting the new year. We don't have a budget yet. Uh and and changes that may have been made uh since that budget was approved. So for revenue, uh July twenty twenty five, we're at ninety three percent. Of um budget that's yet still to be received and recognized compared to ninety two percent in the prior year. And expense, which is on page two fifty eight. Uh same ninety seven percent for both uh June, July twenty twenty five and July twenty twenty. And then the most current monthly financial report is the one for August. So again, preliminary budget plus any changes, we're looking at two months of activities report. Um for revenue on page two fifty nine, August twenty twenty five is at eighty six percent. And August twenty twenty four is eighty nine percent. There's a slightly bigger difference here. It doesn't look like the surplus entries were done. In August of last year. So you'll see that in September. Um I imagine that that's probably just a tiny difference in when those entries have been done. It spends on page two sixty one and August twenty twenty five. We were at ninety four percent of the budget still remaining to be spent compared to ninety five percent in the prior year. If you have any questions on those. So just uh moving on over to the monthly budget change report. We've included in here the budget change report to the end of June. And so just a reminder, this report, we capture any um revenue adjustments or any changes to revenue. And only significant expense adjustments. And I'll just highlight the new items on page two hundred and sixty two for the operating fund. We uh had some additional interest revenue, two hundred and fifty eight thousand. That's because of the land sale uh to CSF that lands down. Uh there was an entry that was made for the society that after school sport and art initiative. Um. At the end of the year, we defer any revenue that's unspent, nine thousand. There is an adjustment um to the LEA of nineteen thousand and that's an in and an out. So out of ministry grant and into LA revenue. Task program had some sales of their sheds that they've built, uh nine thousand. There were uh some additional international education revenues of two hundred and thirty nine thousand. Um partially offset and it's not wholly offset because seventy four thousand uh went directly to the uh the district as part of our. Um propping. And then miscellaneous donations of two thousand. And there were no changes with special purpose funds on page two hundred and sixty three. Two hundred and page two hundred and sixty four, we have the capital fund. And there was a small amount of interest on our local capital, six hundred and fifty one dollars from May. Uh thirty six thousand uh was earned on our ministry restricted capital. From May. And then we have separate report. So starting in the new year, this report includes activity for for July and August. And operating fund, you'll find the items listed on page two hundred and sixty five. I'll just mention to you that the budget that's on the top of this page is now reverted back to the preliminary budget. And then once we have the final budget in place, we'll adjust that. So here you can see the that the society grant that was deferred in June is now added back at nine thousand. Uh we received a grant uh for it's called a Tilfan climate risk reduction grant, and that's for some improvements to the garden. And that's. Uh DDCM grant that uh District of Sanich uh was a recipient of and some of it was on our school properties. Uh we received a grant for uh on behalf of the teacher for visually impaired. Um revenue is five thousand. Miscellaneous donations and revenue of forty two thousand. We have a a reduction in skill trades, we see grant eight thousand. And art starts grant reduction of eighteen thousand. And I'll just note there that the contingencies and fund balances have been updated. Um to the new balances that had subject to who will buy the official trustees. So uh those were approved earlier in meeting. Our contingency is one million. We have capital reserves of two hundred and ninety two thousand in local capital. And ministry restricted capital is at fifteen million. And if you go to page two hundred and sixty six, special purpose grant. So these are. Um changes in grants that were already in the budget. Um there's been revised funding. So when they have built them, would have built them. Based on the best information um we had, perhaps whatever we bought in the prior year. So there's been some adjustments to. Uh five areas. There's a increase of twelve thousand to the strong start grant. There's a eleven thousand reduction to the grant for changing results for young children. A nineteen thousand dollar grant reduction for early years to kindergarten. A ledger school, part of the provincial resource program, had an increase in their grant seventeen thousand. And the provincial conclusion outreach, also provincial resource program grant increased by five thousand. And lastly, on page two hundred and sixty seven, under the capital fund. Interest income earned on local capital is one thousand four hundred and sixty one dollars. And seventy five thousand dollars for the ministry.
So thank you. All right, moving on to the quarterly facilities, operation and capital update.
Sure. I will be there.
Yes.
Um. Bit of an update was clearly your part, but a lot of this was completed in the summer. So the team completed the exterior painting board, which was started last summer, completed this summer. Um they started the exterior painting at Barbuda and also completed the summer three interior uh gym repaints. And they touched up all the parking with the lot lines throughout the school district and finished a third of the gym floors. Along along with the annex itself, to give you the idea, the annex itself, everything had to be moved out. They had to be stretched and sanded. And then we finished. That was gorgeous. Anyone's out there, replicate. Um we also completed a fire bomb testing throughout the district, a third of the dust cleaning that we do every single summer. Do that and backflow testing. Uh we did two sewer line replacements, one inspector and let Tommy this year. Um we also, if you recall, removed the portable to sun dance in March and we got the occupancy ready before school started. Just in time. Um this year, we actually took on sort of two student kitchens at Spectrum and we did refurbish one of them. So we built all of that as a house and. And installed them over the summer. Um we had a number of accessibility projects to complete and completed them all except for clam birds curving, which happened in September twenty second for the phony day. Um we worked with BC Housing to complete the building envelope upgrade at Lambert Park. So they did sixty percent of the building around a rack round lamp park, the window replacement and siding replacement. And we're currently working on the other forty percent. Uh the slate roof at side park, we're on phase four now. Um. Nearing completion for the year and then we'll finish it completely next year. So that's almost done. Um we did, the gym floor was replaced at James Bay along with the activity rooms. So those look great. Um Kancy childcare is now open. Vic, hi childcare. We're just in the um last final stages of getting it opened. Tommy, same thing. We're at the last final stages before it's opened. Uh Custodial, they deep cleaned, to give you an idea, they deep cleaned uh three point two millions per feet throughout the district. It was six feet Spanish short time grid. So that's a slight number. Like when you look at that number, not that.
Yeah, they were busy.
And they cleaned um just a little under seven hundred carpets. So that's the carpets in our classrooms, along with the entrance mats as well. Um cartage between the teacher rooms and the principal rooms, they moved uh. A little under twelve hundred boxes and six hundred tilts and lots of furniture. And we also did a big deep clean on the school this year's. The schools this year. So we discarded four hundred yards of. Items. As you could say, between furniture and things.
Marty, did did that include the move to Cedar Hill, those boxes?
No, no.
So on top of that, on top of.
That we opened the Cedar Hill boxes. We had to be throughout the project, actually, we just saw it. So that we didn't include that. Um we have nineteen inclusive and five regular uh classrooms that are operational now for the school year. Um we also, so strawberry bells, you know, fog system. And that was huge schools to get through because we had to run all the conduits and then pull all the lines through. So it took us pretty much all summer. But it's now a fog school. Um the NCIS team also installed all the tech packages, the TVs, the networks, the PA system, that's in Cedar Hill. So that was a fun, simple project. Um we've got the remaining high schools are now, we've got prams inside and outside now, or we've got prams on all the exterior schools throughout our district. Our security now, which is nice. Um climate energy, this was actually kind of interesting. From twenty nineteen to current. We've been replacing the LEDs and we've saved about four hundred thousand per year now on savings. And we've got two hundred and fifty thousand remakes, which is pretty awesome. Yeah, um that's kind of exciting. Brian, the energy manager is continuing his energy. That's a good idea. So he's getting in from that this year. Um Cedar Hill, we've got condition additional occupancy now. And that was granted on September fourth. And we'll work through um everything. We've got to demolish the old school and get it um. The G L M O loop installed. So everything should be completed by June twenty twenty six. Um yeah, it's on budget. So any questions?
So that with, you know, well done in the overview because there is a lot in there and there's a lot of. People behind all of this work. So who knows to your staff and what they uh what they did over the summer is. Is remarkable. But just I I'm always blown away in September how things look so great. And um it's because of the hard work of the people that work in this district. Um the other thing that really caught my eye on this report was the energy piece. I'd love to delve into that one a little bit. Deeper at future meetings and to really look at that. That's a. And it's not just, it's not just savings. It's not just money. It's what we're we're doing that's different, that makes it different. In um our climate action goals and and other um focus areas. So thank you so much for that. Okay, thanks. Uh so moving on to the deputy trainer.
Uh yeah, so this is some more informational item. Um prior to the issuance of the occupancy permit at uh Cedar Hill, we were required to uh grant a statutory right of way or SRW. To the District of Sanich for waterworks for that sake. Um because there were no scheduled four meetings um and we needed to get. Um the SRW approved by the official trustee, submitted to land title and on title before we can apply. For the occupancy um permit, um we needed to to get the some motions before the official trustee. Uh that was done done um by poll vote. And so on August twelfth, uh poll vote was sent out. There were. Uh multiple votes. Uh, multiple motions, um, one was to approve a statutory right of way. Uh, to give three readings on August twelfth, and also the, the full three readings of the bylaw, all of those motions were carried. Uh, we were advised by our legal counsel that the SW was registered on title on August twenty fifth, so we were able to do that before. Uh, supposed to happen.
Okay. Alright, we're going to leave to add question period, and there are two questions. Uh, the first one actually came in in June, um, and the, it came in after the meeting started, so we didn't see it to read it at the. June board meeting, and, um, it was from Velasco Booth, and since then, uh, the question that was answered by, uh. Superintendent, uh, wouldn't, and the, uh, the last booth has asked that it be read it and be part of the, the minutes, there's a. A very lengthy preamble, which as part of our, our board, um, bylaw, I, I won't be reading, but I will read the, the question, and. I will ask superintendent to provide the answer, so that is part of the official, uh, minutes from tonight. So there was concerns about safety and, uh, looking at the, the athletic training at the Chi. Uh, so the question is, what plan does the district have to protect the safety of Vic High students and provide. Optimal conditions for athletic training that they deserve?
Thank you, yeah, thank you, uh, first of all, safety is always our highest priority, so. I will move to the administration and Victoria and I to see what, if any, safety concerns they may have with regards to any of the. Um, training spaces, um, and we also, I think, we're very proud of, of the amenities spaces that were provided, uh. For both athletics and other opportunities for the school in the seismic project, so I think we have. Provided some fantastic spaces there for athletic training and, and, um, for the students in and at the Chi.
Thank you. Uh, the second question, uh, comes from Lori Qua. Um, and the question is, the former trustees have filed a petition in B C Supreme Court for a judicial review of their determination. Does any portion of the legal fees come from the school district budget and expenses? Uh, so the answer to that is no, no, nothing comes from the school district, I don't know where, um, the funding is coming from, so not from the school district, certainly. Okay, that concludes question, Henry, right now we go to G, public disclosure, link down items, and you'll see G one, two, and three. Uh, and there are no new, no, so H, one and two, um, and we are now at high. I'll turn to adjournment, meaning, please, Carrie, thank you so much for all of you for coming, I hope, um, there's no. Issues still with, um, Twitter, that's for all of them.
Yes.
Uh, thank you, everyone, have a wonderful rest of your evening.